Glad to have my girls back. Oh, my girls are back with me. I'm glad to have you guys back here again on Knowledge is Power Podcast Live. We are back on our Tuesday and don't forget people, we are back on Thursday of the entire month of March. We're going to be on Sundays, Tuesdays and Thursday. We have our monthly first Thursday of the month podcast, the roundtable talk. That's this Thursday and every Thursday we'll have a candidate that's running for the city position here for the May 2001 election along with the candidate from the BISD who is running as well. So that's, that's a lot going on. We've got a lot going on. So we had to add some extra days in the week. So we're going to be on this, the month of May, three. Oh, that's him. I'm sorry. The month of March, three big nights of podcasts on Power. Now it's Power Podcast Live. And, and by the way, did, did you notice I have a mask on? If you don't, if you, if you, if you're listening, I'm having a mask on right now because see, the governor of Texas is lifting the mask demands.
I need to get me a Knowledge is Power mask.
Yeah, we're going to have to do that. But people, I'm telling you, don't be no fool. They try to kill you. They try to kill you. That's why our masks, keep masked up, social distancing. That is the best thing for us to do. I know it's all about economics, the economy, but hey, we want to live too. So keep your mask on.
Yes, and it's no point in rushing the mask off. I don't even understand that. Like, I just feel like, that's just, that's just, we're not, you know what? Mask on, okay? Mask on.
Right, right. Now, where's my co-host Francis Locken?
Um, she's on another call and so she'll get with us in just a little bit, but if we got a few minutes, I'd like to.
Why don't you do this for me?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I want to tell everybody about the upcoming event. I'm super excited. We're going to have Miles Hanes, City Council War II, and we're moving the venue. It's going to be at 3690 South 11th Street and we're going to start a little bit earlier than 6:30. So if you want to come out between 6:15, 6 o'clock, um, I'm super excited about this. And then all the other candidates will be back at Neil Sparks Bar and Grill. But Miles is going to be at 3690 South 11th Street. I'm looking forward to this. I'm looking forward to what he's going to say and you guys come out and meet the candidate. I'm super excited about that. Also too, I sent you another flyer, Tony. Can you put it up right quick?
Which one is that?
The Southeast Texas Young Democrats is also holding their monthly meeting on this same day, March the 3rd, at 7 o'clock, we will be having nominations for the Southeast Texas Young Democrat Officers. So that's very important to me. That is huge for the, um, the, the group. And we're going to start the year off with a bang and we're having a Zoom meeting. Anybody that's interested in participating, go ahead and find me on Facebook. I can DM you the link for the Zoom, but the Southeast Texas Young Democrats is hosting their monthly meeting. But this is our nomination meeting for president, vice president, treasurer, secretary, parliamentarian. We're also gonna, um, I think select some committee chairs. Um, I'm looking forward to that with the Southeast Texas Young Democrats. That is a really big organization that currently I'm the assuming vice president of. I'm looking forward to that as well. So I'm the poster child for two things at one time for multitasking.
All right. Good God. I'll tell you what, it's been a, uh, we're going to keep going with the show, but I'm trying to find here, I'm looking down at my, at my phone and I guess I can't find it, but I'll.
That's okay. I'll send it to you in the group chat.
Okay, no problem. I'll look it up and let's get started with our, now who's our guest tonight?
Tonight, we have Elias and I am looking forward to that. He is running for city council at large and we're going to do some questioning and see what we can find out about the candidate.
All right. Well, let's bring our, our guest on and we'll be right back with you on Knowledge is Power Podcast Live. Welcome to Knowledge is Power Podcast Live with your host, Tony Redfern, and my co-host, Madonna Sherwood and Francis Locken.
Knowledge is Power Podcast Live starts now.
Hello?
Hi, good evening. How you doing?
I'm doing okay. Look, tell me your name. Let me say it right because I don't, I hope I didn't mess it up.
You did it perfectly. Elias Ibera.
Okay, I did good.
There's also Elias Ibarra, but whatever is more comfortable, I think. Been in Beaumont, been in the United States, you know, all my life, it's Elias is probably the easiest way to say that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. I said, Lord, I try not to butcher people's names. Now, Tony, yesterday for Stuart, he'll mention all of mine.
Pad up. Your name would sound like it's in shorthand.
And I am super excited about having you on tonight. So while we're getting ready to get started and Tony's doing whatever he's doing, tell us a little bit about yourself. Just give us a little background information.
Well, I am Beaumont, born and raised. I went to Fell Elementary. I went to King Middle School and then I graduated from Central Senior High School. I guess they changed it to Central Medical Magnet High School. Uh, I think I was number eight in my class. I was in the top three, three or five percent. I was a, I was a little nerd. I went to Lamar. I wanted to be a Marine. I actually, I think I got accepted to Naval Academy. I know I took an ROTC scholarship for $150,000. Well, I didn't take it. I was, uh, I received it, but I decided to go and listen into the United States Marine Corps. And I did five years active duty in the aviation side. I had four MOSs. I was aviation life support systems. I was a quality insurance for that. I was a combat marginship instructor and trainer. I probably trained 2,000, 3,000 Marines, if not more, at the Marine Air Group 41 in Fort Worth. I was what we call INI staff, trained a lot of Marines, a lot of active duty. I got out in 2015, August 2015. Then I went back in as a reservist for three more years. I moved back to Beaumont in April of 2016. I am a father of two. I've got two beautiful boys. They are the smartest. They're literally, I, I say this all the time, but they, they think I'm the hero because I've got this Batman suit, like a legitimate Batman suit, and they think I'm a hero. But they're the ones that are like literally, they keep me going every single day. They are my heroes. Let me get, not, not get choked up right now. But, uh, I decided to run because, um, I mean, I was born here in Beaumont. It, uh, it was a little bit rough for me to, um, to, to go from, you know, my community, my, I guess, like say from my, from my economic status to where I'm at now. And I don't want our Beaumont children to have to struggle as hard as, you know, some of us did. Think it shouldn't be that way. And I feel like that's the need that we have is to make sure that our city provides equal opportunity for all of our children.
Let me, um, and I, I know I'm, I'm, I'm all, I'm, I'm, I'm the talkative one in the group, but, um, let me ask you a question because I have a list, but just off the cuff, I have a question for you. What do you think the biggest issue is facing the Hispanic community in Beaumont currently?
Ooh, that's a, that's a good question. And I'm going to be honest with you. Uh, I didn't really know much about, um, local politics or much of politics until my adult life. Uh, some of it is cultural. A lot of it is cultural and, uh, I can say that, you know, to be honest. Because we have to acknowledge our deficiencies in order to fix those efficiencies. And a lot of it is on the Hispanic side is the cultural difference. There is that culture, you know, and there is a divide in the sense of especially when we don't have that representation, we feel that our voice isn't being heard. Not that it, not that we don't have a voice, but that that voice almost doesn't matter. So I think that's a big part of it.
Well, let me ask you, let me ask you this Elias. Why are you, why are you interested in this position? This is at large, right?
Absolutely.
Tell me, why are you interested in this position?
The at-large position encompasses all of Beaumont and, uh, I'm a, an all for one, uh, one for all, excuse me, kind of person. Uh, I can't just focus on one group. I have to ensure that everybody is taken care of. Uh, I mean, we know our city. I mean, I've lived here 30 years minus the five years that I was gone for the active duty side. Uh, and I know certain of our areas, our wards have been neglected or at least seem to be neglected. I think they have been. Uh, and being at large gives me the best opportunity to reach the entire city and ensure that certain areas aren't just neglected, that all our city is taken care of, that we have an equal surface, that the city as itself altogether can be beautified, can come together and work together.
Madonna?
I'm sorry, my, my, my mic is muted. You know how I do. Okay, um, tell us a little bit about, what do you think the main issue is facing Beaumont? What do you think the main, uh, problem is facing Beaumont as a whole since you're running at large?
As a whole, uh, legislatively speaking? No, uh, I think there's, there's a, a lot of issues. The biggest thing is that, um, and I, I'm going to go ahead and be honest with you. When I got out of the Marine Corps, I didn't want to come back to Beaumont. And a lot of my friends were like, why are you coming back to Beaumont, you know? Uh, why are you going to be back over here? There's nothing to do. There's this, now, you know? And that, and that's, that's exactly the problem is the lack of retention of our citizens, of our residents. Uh, the lack of retention of our youth and there's no, the, the growth is minimal, you know, at, at best. I think that's probably the hugest issue, you know? We need to make sure that our businesses are, have the ability to, to, uh, build here, that our businesses call out to our youth, that our youth actually get engaged, that they desire to make a difference in their hometown and stay here and make Beaumont grow.
What do you think is your qualifications? What, what has prepared you for this position in city council?
Let's see. The Marine Corps itself has a certain way of leadership. I know a lot of people look at it, that the Marine Corps, the military, and they think it's all about yelling and getting in your face. Uh, and though that may have been true for the boot camp process, it's not true when you're molding Marines, when you're molding teams, when you're trying to get mission success. When it comes down to that, it's basically knowing who your people are, understanding what motivates them and then utilizing that to motivate them to get the mission accomplished, to make them work together for the betterment of the, of the mission. Um, I think that's probably one of the biggest things that, you know, I'm able to build teams. I'm able to see, okay, this is the goal. This is the problem. What are the, uh, what are the solutions? Okay, boom, boom, boom. We have A, B, C, D solutions. With A, B, C, and D, each of them have risks that may fail or that may, uh, cause to be a hindrance. How do we mitigate those risks in each one? And what we do is we look at all four of these issues or solutions, excuse me, and all the risks associated and how we mitigate each risk and come down with a solution that is fluid so that we can go ahead and just get it done as efficiently as possible.
Now, um, you said, uh, something about handling the risk and the reward and solutions and problems. What do you understand the duties of the city councilmen, uh, you and your compadres to be as far as council members? Explain to me how you think, uh, the, the council manager government works and what you think the actual duties of the job are?
So Beaumont is under, under a council manager government, which basically the city manager is the one that deals with all the day-to-day daily tasks, uh, to put it that. Uh, they're the ones who bring the budget towards, uh, well, he's the one that brings the budget to us, uh, that's, that brings us proposals and say, hey, this is the best, you know, ish, the way, uh, solution for this or this or that. Uh, we are there to legislate ordinances, policies, uh, give the city manager direction. Um, I'd say pretty much administer the, the city itself. And, uh, when it comes down to the city council, uh, we, we also adopt budgets and stuff, but when the manager brings things up, you know, we have, there's a vote on it, right? It's a four council vote, right? What we call, uh, I can't even think of the word right now, the quorum. Four is a quorum. Four out of seven, you have your, uh, mayor, two city council at large, and then four wards, one representative per ward. So you need at least four votes to get anything passed. Uh, one of the things that I hear a lot is, you know, you need four votes, you need four votes, you need four votes. And I'm going to be honest with you personally, and this may be the militaristic view that I have, but if I can't propose a change or, you know, uh, propose anything, a solution to a, a problem and explain it in such a way that basically effectively communicates, say, hey, look, this is what needs to be brought up, you know, this is what we need to change, this is why we need to change it. Again, going back to, these are the solutions to change it. Each solution has certain risks. This is how we implement those risks and this is the best solution by implementing these risks, this risk, that risk. And that gives us a streamline straight to the solution. By doing that, that's going to take away from spending 40 minutes on questions as to why, you know, this is needed or not needed. It's either, hey, I know what I'm doing. This is what we got. This is what's best for the city, for the constituents economically. And again, benefits to residents or it doesn't.
Well, what is your, what is the one major issue you plan to address?
That you plan to address? Like you plan to address as a councilman at large, you?
That I plan? Uh, well, there's a few of them. Again, uh, I can't focus on just one thing because I feel that it's all, it all comes together, you know? And basically it really comes down to the school district. I know the city council is not the school board, but we do get taxed and as, as residents, you get taxed and that tax money goes to your school. So we definitely need to open up a communication between our school board and find out, hey, what are the resources you need? What is it that we can do as a council, as a city to ensure that our children are getting the knowledge they need? I love you guys' podcast name, Knowledge is Power. Knowledge truly is power. And when we, when our children lack that knowledge, that's, that's less power that they have on their side. We need to empower them through knowledge. We need to ensure that our schools are giving them that knowledge. We need to ensure that the school board has the resources necessary to provide that knowledge to our children. We can utilize our businesses, local businesses, small businesses to come in to the community and engage them and say, hey, look, if you want to start a business, this is how you do it, you know? According to state laws, you have to get a doing business as, you have to get your EIN number, or whatever the case it is, whatever business you're trying to do, this is how you do it. Bring the knowledge back to the people. Educate our children. That's the biggest issue. Because when you have education, you have power. Otherwise, you have kids who are looking out, you know, on, on the corner of the street saying, oh, you know, this guy's making money by doing this, that guy's doing that. Let me just make quick money like that. And that's how we lose our youth to this crime.
A great answer. Great, great answer. I like that. Uh, so, well.
I, I would like to know, um, since you said everything is kind of all together and you wouldn't focus on one issue, what makes you stand out from other candidates? What's going to make you stand out from everybody else that's running?
Uh, leadership. I want to say, you know, again, it, 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 you know, not to kind of pry on this one thing, but I've heard it before. I've heard, you know, you need four votes to change. I've heard it from incumbents. I've heard it from some of the, uh, other, uh, candidates. We need four votes. We need four votes. We need four votes. Again, true leadership, you're going to get those four votes because you know what you're doing, you know what you're saying. You have a solution. You have all the possible risks that are associated with it and you can present it effectively in the right way to where every other councilman on that, uh, council is going to either say, oh, yeah, you're right, let's do it. Or no, that's not going to benefit the city and it's going to be quick. I think that's a huge thing right now that we have an issue with, you know, especially in, uh, I'm sure you, uh, you guys have seen the, uh, council meetings where certain issues are drug out for 40 minutes or an hour or more. And, you know, being able to bring in that true leadership that says, hey, look, this is what we're going to do. On top of that, you know, I think there is a reach, you know, being able to reach out to the whole city, the entire city at large. Like I said, if, just by winning at large, if I were to win at large with the max votes, that proves that the city itself has a voice. That proves that the city can come together for one purpose, to have a voice, to prove that there is a voice and show that the power is in the people, not in the seat.
Great answer. I mean, you, you, you're filling in the blanks, son. I, I sure do. Um, let's see, if you can change one thing in the zoning code here in Beaumont, what would it be? And why?
It's a good question.
I know.
I've heard a lot that it's, it's really hard to start a business in Beaumont. The permitting process is, you know, it's, it's hectic, it's expensive. Uh, I mean, we look at downtown. I mean, you look at homes, the historic district, uh, there's a few different things, but I think making it more affordable, uh, making that permitting process a little bit more easier for our businesses so we can build our business because we need the businesses. You know, I don't want to, I don't want to be a council member who, who says, hey, let's, let's tax our, our constituents to get more revenue. No. How about we add more businesses that can bring sales tax and we can use that as revenue, you know? Let's just do that instead. So making, making the permitting process a little bit more affordable, a little more streamlined for our businesses. There's another thing that I'm kind of, I, I, I have to do a little more research on it. Beaumont has a lot of historical districts and I mean, it's great. It really is great that we, that we focus on our history. But we can't live in the past. So, and you know, I'm, you know, there's ideas out there and it's something that I've got to do my research on and see how we can maintain our history, but grow and not be stuck here. My, my parents live in Old Town. I was, I was raised in Old Town and my mom was telling me a couple of weeks ago that, you know, back in the eighties and back then, our neighborhood was beautiful. Now it's not. You know, the same street I, I use to walk to school, it's a central Angelina Street. Yeah, I can walk, that was 15 years ago. I can walk down that street, still hit the same potholes. They're still there. There's some patches there that, you know, they need to get redone. Uh, but I think, you know, definitely zoning wise, the permitting for local businesses and, uh, possibly looking into something about, uh, balancing that historic district with growth.
If, if someone came to you with a proposal to build a new piece of public infrastructure in our city, how would you evaluate whether that project was or is worth implementing?
Does it benefit the residents? Will it bring the city revenue? You know, I, I, I pay taxes, you know, I live in, I actually live in Ward 1 in the West End. And thankfully I have got, um, the military, a little bit of military, uh, what's the word? Uh, discounts, I guess you can say, but I still pay a lot of taxes. So I don't want to raise my own taxes and I know I don't want to raise the taxes of the people. So, uh, if a project were brought up to me, definitely, you know, how much revenue can that, uh, business bring to our city? So we don't have to tax our residents or tax ourselves. And is it really going to call the attention of our youth? Is it, is it going to be something that our youth is like, hey, you know what? Yeah, you know, now we have this place that we can go hang out to or, you know, uh, they provide a service that, that, that really engages the youth. So I think those are the two biggest things. Does it engage our youth, our community? And is it going to bring revenue to the city?
Um, I have a question. How do you plan to involve residents in your decision-making process?
That's a good one. Uh, working with neighborhood associations, working with the neighborhood. This is a digital age. We have social media now. I mean, we, I think we can do some polls on there. Uh, but really, it, it really takes, I've always heard, you know, I don't know, I'm going to kind of bring this to the side here. People like, you know, well, this person didn't text me, so I didn't text them. Okay, so you ruin the relationship because somebody didn't text you. You were expecting somebody to text you. No. Reach out to the people. Go out there. You know, if the peoples aren't coming to the city council, then I need to make the decision. I need to make, take that step to say, okay, let me go to them. Let me go and, you know, visit at their meetings, at their social events and say, okay, you know, what, 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 what does the people want? I'm running again to be a voice of the people. Not that the voice, the people don't have a voice, but to uplift and to broadcast that voice and ensure that it's actually being, uh, adhered to or heard. So I would definitely say that, um, getting involved with the community is one thing that, uh, I have been doing a lot more lately, uh, with this campaign deal. Uh, and, you know, it's, it's interesting to find that, you know, certain associations that I wasn't really aware of. And they are there, but for some reason, I guess maybe Facebook doesn't promote them, you know, towards, you know, the algorithms or whatever, but, uh, that just says that I need to do a better job to get out there and search and say, okay, what, what's going on? What's going on in my neighborhood? Where can I go to ensure that I hear the voice of the people?
Okay, so listen, everybody's been talking about revitalizing downtown. What is your take on our downtown area and how could, um, somebody make it successful?
Downtown, uh, I think if I'm right, has been an issue since the 1980s. So 40-ish years that it has not grown, that it's failed to grow. Uh, money spent by the city. I don't believe that the city should be, uh, paying for that. We need investors. We need investors that have a plan, investors that have ideals, that are willing to invest into our downtown area. Uh, I was looking at one area, the Calder Avenue. This is just an idea. This is just my personal idea. You know, if the people don't want it, the people don't want it. But I thought about, you know, we had Crocker Street and it failed. There was a lot of liability issues, whatever the case may be. Um, I was looking at the Calder Avenue between Fourth Street and 11th Street. You know, we have, uh, Luke's there. I think there's, um, Tacos Obamba, um, Struggle Street. If we could create, and, and the, and the walkways are really nice. The sidewalks are, you know, they got the little cobblestone going on. If we could create a strip, like Austin has their Sixth Street, Fort Worth has Seventh Street, California and San Diego, they have all these, these huge walkways, boardwalks and stuff. We, we, you know, we could do something like that. It's, it's really, it already failed in downtown. Can we bring it elsewhere, like that Calder Avenue area? Where we have, you know, individuals that can come out, hang out, have a little bit of entertainment, some nightlife. They can walk back and forth and bar hop without driving from Fennett Road to Calder Street to Calder while they've already had a drink or two. You know, it minimizes that. It mitigates that risk of people driving while they're drinking. It, uh, any, uh, crime that's there in that area can be pushed away because now you've populated that area. You added more street lights, more parking lights, uh, so people can't, you know, break in or break into cars as easily because now they're being watched. You consolidate everybody to one area and you put a couple of patrol officers out there and then you ensure, you know, that everybody gets home safely after the end of night. And, you know, we got a lot of taco trucks. We could put some taco trucks out there, some burger trucks out there. And, you know, 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, it's, it's, it would be the perfect nightlife for Beaumont. Uh, again, can we do it in a different area? Maybe. But going back to the downtown area, it's going to take investors. Um, it, you know, it's, we, we have to have investors that are willing to invest. We have to, uh, ensure that our permitting and policies allow investors to come in and build their businesses there.
Okay, I'm back on the screen. Let me move my screen here. There we go. Left, I left here for a minute. I was doing some downloading to make sure we had all the questions, asked, asked questions for you. Uh, so if we can, so where, where's your favorite place, uh, to spend time in Beaumont, Elias?
Uh, that's a very good question. I would say work, but no. No, thankfully, uh, let's see. Well, um, as a father, I don't go out as much. Um, as a single father, I should say. Uh, I was working one week on, one week off. So the week that I worked, I didn't have my kids. The week that I was off is when I had my, my son, my oldest son, and I, it's, it's very hard to go out. Uh, so, uh, really it's, it's anywhere that I can spend times, quality time with, with, uh, friends and socialize and actually have a good time. There's a lot of good places in, in Beaumont, you know? Luke's for a while was, uh, the long, uh, probably before COVID happened, uh, was one of the places I did enjoy to be at. It was close to my parents' house. I could go stop by there, go there and then go home. Um, but really and truly, um,
Let me ask that question for you. There's nowhere, there's nowhere to hang out. There's nowhere, no place to go. There's nowhere to have entertainment. It, it's, it's dead, okay? And this is what I'm, my next question is going to be for you and, and, uh, I think that'd be my last question, I think. I don't know. What can you do to make a difference in your community? Because I want you to, I want you to realize that Beaumont has been stagnant for the last 25 years. I want to know what it's going to take, what you, what you can do to help to uncover and, and, and be more creative in the city of Beaumont. What can you do if you become city? in the city of Beaumont. What can you do if you become city councilman at large?
Uh, that is a really good question, because it's, it's, it's not easily answered. I mean, you, it's easier to say things than to do, let's put it that way. And I think, for one, if we, if I could at least be an example to our students, to our children, that will show them, you know, that will help them to grow, to really like think about life and say, you know, I, I don't, I wanna be the best at everything that I do. You know, shoot for the, the moon and even, or the stars, and even if I fail, I'll still be amongst the moon or the other stars, vice versa. Um, but I think bringing some kind of entertainment, or whether it's a festival, you know, uh, or businesses that really, really, really do encourage, not encourage, but entertain our youth, that really call out to the people. And like you said, you know, like technically, there isn't one good place to, you know, to hang out. But if we had something family oriented, something where I can go out there and really spend time with my kids, where they can really have fun. Even ma, and maybe it's a, some kind of festival, you know? What is it? Uh, Beaumont's known for Gladys City. Maybe some kind of oil festival that we can say, hey, you know, on this day, uh, whatever, you know, the Gladys came out, you know? I know we do the thing every hundred years, but if we could do something yearly to commemorate, you know? What, and it, it doesn't have to be that, it could be whatever, but something to bring the kids out, you know, I mean, we have the state fair, but something a little bit more homey, something more family oriented, that's close and local to the, to the constituents, that really like makes people proud of being in Beaumont. Like, yeah, yeah, you know, we, we are proud of, uh, we're proud of our cultures, right? We're proud of our, our heritage, we're proud of Beaumont. And, and makes people really wanna be here and not say, oh, why are you coming back?
Elias Abur. Did I say it right?
I told you not to do it.
Elias Aburro.
No, that's not right.
What is it?
Elias Abarro. Is that right?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay, see, you gotta work on this.
For you to show me up like that.
Elias Abarro, we really appreciate you. We're excited to have you on. We are happy that you came on to answer our questions. You know, we have a huge following. Our folks come on and they try to gather some information about who the candidates are, why they're running, what they want for the city, and what do they bring to the table? And that's kinda what we go for. We are super excited that you came on tonight because you're ready for candidate at large, and that encompasses the whole Beaumont town. Do you have any last thing that you wanna say to the people as to why they should vote for you? This is it. Make your, make your smile.
This is it. The final, uh, countdown, right? Uh, first off, I wanna thank you guys for having me on the show. I really do appreciate you guys reaching out and giving me the opportunity to, uh, to, to show who I am, to show what I know. There's a lot of times where, you know, I do a lot for the community and I don't broadcast it as much. So, it, you know, but, you know, I, that's my personal, you know, I, I was trained, or I say trained, I was brought up to be a servant of the people, you know, uh, faithfully speaking, you know? That's, that's my faith wise, those are my values is to, to serve, uh, always serve. Um, but with, uh, so, so thank you again for bringing me on the show. I did wanna, uh, you know, let everybody know, again, there is two at-large positions, uh, for the Beaumont, uh, city council. Uh, we need to register, make sure we, we register. I think, uh, I'll have to double check this number, but I believe only sixteen percent of registered voters in Beaumont actually go out and vote. And we need to make sure that we bump those numbers up. We want a hundred percent of the registered voters to come out and vote. You know, uh, help me show the city that we can all come together for one purpose and truly show the power of the people. You know, so I, that, if I can get that, that will prove to me that Beaumont is, is great. You know, and we can make the change. So April nineteenth to the twenty-seventh is, um, early voting. Make sure you register prior to April first. Um, and May first is the voting date, so let's come together, Beaumont. Let's really, truly show our voice and that our voice has power. That's, that's what we need to do. And, and then let's make change from there, positive change for our future, for a better future, for a cleaner Beaumont, and for our, the future of our children.
Thank you, Elias. I pre, I've enjoyed you. It's been a pleasure to have you on our show. And we're gonna ask you to come back. Before I ask you to come back, if you don't win, are you planning on supporting a candidate? Are you, you planning on working in the community still?
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, absolutely. This, you know, this isn't, yeah, uh, yeah, no. Definitely the, the, again, it's service, service whether I'm in the seat or not. We're gonna build the community together and I'm gonna do as much as I can as possible, you know, as much as possible to ensure the future of our children, because that, that really is the focus for me.
That's right.
And I know I'm not the only father, I'm not the only parent. So, yeah, no, this is, this is gonna continue.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're gonna do it.
Francis, tell us about your two appointments tomorrow.
Shug, Cessla Donna. See, he can't even get my name right.
Look what I said.
Anyway, the Southeast Texas Young Democrats is hosting a meeting virtually, and we're gonna do our nominations for officers. So if you're interested in the organization or becoming a part, or just having a voice in the community, you wanna learn something about, um, the democratic politics in this area, there's a meet tomorrow, March third, seven P M. It's gonna be on Zoom. If you want the link, inbox me, I'll send it. I also have a candidate meet and greet that is also tomorrow from six thirty to eight thirty with Miles Haynes. And we're gonna do sort of what we did here tonight, ask him some questions, allow him to, um, talk about his platform. And I'm looking forward to that. There's a new venue, thirty-six ninety, South Eleven Street, Beaumont, Texas, seven, 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 oh, five, and we are out.
What else you gotta tell them about?
Mask on, okay, mask on. I don't care what anybody says, mask on, mask on.
I'm, I'm, I, I'm gonna keep my mask on, okay?
Mask on.
It's gonna stay on until Greg Albert stand up and walk.
Okay, mask on, until he gets out.
I'm waiting.
Thank you for watching Knowledge is Power Podcast Live. Be sure to like and subscribe to all Knowledge is Power social media pages.
And American people have, I'm sorry, Kay Lisona.